It now being 5:30, I will call the Monday's May 20th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for Cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. First item on our agenda is reorganization of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
And make the motion that Christine Joy be appointed Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that. All those in table?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Yay!
Who wants to be the minute taker?
I'll be the minute taker.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that John Trainor serve as the -- is it clerk?
Yeah.
Clerk.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You mean you're gonna write the minute?
Just when you're not around.
Oh, look how old.
Sorry, Bree!
She logged up for a minute.
Boy!
And once again, oh, gosh.
Darn it!
Do we need a vice chair?
Yes. Why don't we -- I'll make a motion that we appoint Mark Russo Vice Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, you know the thing is official when the former Chair, and we thank him so much for his service in the last year.
Absolutely.
Hand it over the script for --
I know.
For Cablecom.
No. I must give you the official thing that I was given.
Oh, the one that I gave you? From Kelly Thompson?
Yeah!
The passing of the --
It is.
Thank you, John. I'll just cherish that.
Right.
Keep it for the next guy.
I think that could go down through the ages.
Yeah, it should. Maybe we should laminate it?
Would you want me to? I really will.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so do we have warrants?
Yes, I circled the total.
You want me to do it?
That'd be great.
So warrants signed included the P3, the project management for the police and APC, the contractor came to a total of $134,989.92.
Excellent. All right, town meeting review. Wow.
It's almost scary, you know? I wish we had a time to a little more discussion, but out at 9:20 is just amazing.
With the --
And it shows the confidence of the town and the team, and their management, finance committee, selectmen, town administrator, accountant.
And the understanding of, I think, what we're collectively trying to accomplish, that -- and that the bylaws are so outdated, that, you know, we've got a really good group that's working extremely hard.
Alan does a great job, too, of --
Of presenting, he sure does.
Kind of bringing it in, making it concise.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so kudos to them, all their hard work. That was what a -- probably one of the nicest groups that we've been lucky to be part of, is to get them up and going, and they're --
I'm impressed with his ability to take disparate people and get them so they can all work together. It's really great.
Yeah, it is great. It is great. Any comments?
No, it's actually my rave is going so quickly, there being so little dissent, and could be from disinterest, but people, I heard over and over from people, that they felt like it was the good job that so many departments and committees and commissions are doing in town, that people have faith in us, and I -- it also reinforced the degree to which if stuff is done right ahead of time, in terms of discussion and public hearings and education, by the time you get to town meeting, it can be pretty straightforward and quick. So very appreciative for all the work within this building and around, and for the citizens that came.
Yeah, absolutely. And I would just like to echo our support for the Council on Aging, and that we're gonna work together and come up with a really good, workable solution.
And I can update you on a meeting I had today, a little later, or whenever you wanna do it.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, so status, boards and committees, appointments and expirations. Maybe it's just, at this point, being aware of it? It's something that we need to address?
Yeah, I think I put that on, just asked for that to be put on, in part because my pet peeve, that we always seem to be up against the last minute.
Right.
And so I discussed with Liz, and through her, Bree, I think getting the word out there to boards, committees, and commissions, that for expiring terms, they need to get back to Bree so we can have a list well ahead of time. I think maybe it's gonna be a little challenge this year with the transition in the Clerk's office, and so we just wanted to make sure we get that process going. Lots of these boards only meet once a month or less, so we wanted to jog their memories to get things going. And I think we ended up with a timeline, didn't we?
We did, and Bree already sent it out to everybody. I believe people have to respond by June 12th, is it? It's in time, it's in well enough advance for our second meeting in June.
Yes.
There's still plenty before the June 30th deadline.
Okay.
And she sent out a very eloquent message to everybody, so...
We have it by June 12th, so we could do the meeting --
On the 17th.
17th.
Nice.
To be updated by then, then if anything. And Tara, before she had left, a while before she had -- she had sent something out also to everyone about if you had any questions, so I put together something last week and sent it out. I haven't heard anything back from anyone, but that should have been in your email as well.
I received it.
You've received it, yeah, okay. I'm thinking tonight will they have meetings, possibly?
I'm sorry?
Tonight, tonight they'll have some of their meetings, we might -- we'll hear probably maybe tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Send out a reminder, too.
It was prudent to get it on the agenda, because it does seem...
So board chairs, if our commission's committee chairs, if you're listening, if you have people, members with expiring terms, we wanna know, and we hope that they'll let us know that they wanna return.
Mm-hmm. All right, execution of contract, ambulance billing and collection service pro EMS solutions?
So we have the contract worked out, and it's in accordance with the RFP that we had issued.
Mm-hmm.
Several meetings ago, this board had voted to award it.
Right.
To pro EMS. Right now, they're still putting the finishing touches on some of the appendices to the contract, which include like our current ambulance billing rates and all. So what I was hoping we could do, because we wanted it to be effective June 1st, is maybe the board could take a vote this evening to execute said contract, and then we can just have it available in the office for signature for those of you that are able to drop by as soon as the appendices are ready. But everything is fully in accordance with the RFP and what you awarded.
Okay.
It's the 4% rate.
I'll make a motion that upon receipt of the appendices, that the Board of Selectmen execute the contract with pro EMS solutions for our ambulance billing and collection service, effective June 1st.
Yeah, I would only add that the Fire Chief and the Town Administrator just...
Sure, upon your review of the approval.
Yes.
Yeah.
We will take it.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And you hope to have that?
I hope to have it in the next few days.
Great.
Oh, my gosh. I'm so used to hearing John.
Okay, so on to parking lot update. So John, you wanna take the lead with this one?
Sure. So I sent out, and I struck out those I thought we had accomplished, but I didn't wanna eliminate them until you all say yes, in fact, they're -- you agree. So the town on land disposition process, I still feel a little uncomfortable with that. We are doing it, we're gonna have the option, but the process itself is being far as being documented? I just think maybe we need to leave it on there for a time being.
You had a draft, yeah. Could you resend the draft?
Send that draft to everybody, and we'll see if maybe we could put that maybe on your next meeting agenda to approve the targets.
The policy, right.
I think it just needs a little more verbiage, and then be with it.
Okay, so Liz will send, send draft, and then maybe we can put it on the agenda for next time, and...
Do you have an extra parking lot?
Or just maybe the items from the parking --
Do you have an extra parking lot?
That's what you said.
Do you need one?
Do you mind, Liz?
I have an extra.
You do? Thank you. I don't have that.
Master plan for the town campus, I mean, that's gonna be on there for certainly probably the life of this board. There's just so much to be done, so I don't have any issue unless you wanna add or subtract anything. Have we heard from a colony?
We have not. So I'm going to send something else to them and just find out. They had it in draft format, in a very polished kind of final draft. I will see when we can get our hands on that.
It's a nice, I don't wanna jinx this, but that's a nice summer project to think about, and other things aren't going on.
Completion of the town pavement plan? Maybe Liz, you can please?
So Scott was going to pursue the pavement management software that a lot of the communities have. It's through an engineering firm that does it for a lot of communities. He had kinda put that on the shelf for a little bit while he was making sure that he could afford certain other things out of his Chapter 90 money. So I believe he's coming back to that in the very near future, but he just wanted to make sure that he didn't leave himself with a deficit later on, managing some of the other issues that we've had, like the hole in the road on Route 58. He had to order a very expensive plate to cover that over.
Yep.
So there's been some other kind of roadway items that took sort of priority, but he will come back.
So maybe sometime in early July or something, he could kinda tell us, because by that time, he should know.
Pursue that maybe, and I think it would be good, too, if he does choose to go with that vendor, maybe they could come in and do a little presentation so that we could
That'd be great.
See what it has to offer.
Could we just take a step back to the master plan for town campus? There's been some concern from people from the church, I think, about the plan. I wonder, after we get the master plan, if it might be, make sense to get together, not really necessarily as a board, but maybe with some of their leadership, so they can take a look at it, and just, I mean, we're so vague right now, and we don't have any specifics, but I think they're concerned about some of the land back there that may be impacted.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The gentleman that lives on Maple Street, Michael Mattern?
Yes.
Sent me an email.
Yep.
And it just kinda got lost in the shuffle with getting ready for town meeting, so, you know, that might be something we wanna think about.
I think they'll be pleasantly surprised when they hear more about what we're thinking.
Okay.
Yeah. Technology master plan. Liz and I met with Steve Pello, the Regional Director of Technology for the schools, and he agreed to act as, in effect, our consultant, and he suggested that we need a infrastructure survey. So Liz, we were gonna send out, did we send it out, or were we talking about sending it?
I'm sending it tomorrow.
Okay.
So we're trying to apply for a state-funded IT audit first, as a first step. I don't think it'll be all that in-depth, but at least it'll kind of get this on the radar, and I would think that for a town this size, that they could take a fairly decent look at what we have here, and what direction we're going in. It seems like it's important to do, just in light of, you know, we have the new server, and we're still working on the email address situation. Before we do that, Steve Pello thought that it would be smart to have this audit done first. In addition to that, where town meeting voted to appropriate the funds for the fiber optic network, I think it would be good just to kind of have IT on the radar and make sure that we're not making short-sighted decisions that might impact something later on. So I think that this will be good all around, if we take kind of an all-encompassing approach to it, and look at internet, phone service, like everything to do with IT all at once.
It's really kinda like the master plan for the campus in a sense, except it's technology. Steve suggested a two-step approach. One is the survey that Liz is sending out, and the second step would be to then bring in a company that specializes in infrastructure audit, to do a look at the whole technology position in the town. Because frankly, we don't know where we're going, we're just band-aiding everything as it turns up. So I think it's a great, I feel very confident, because Liz and I don't have enough technology knowledge to make decisions, and I think having Steve as our consultant will really make sure that we do the right ones. Codification strategy, this came out of the grant that was given to the town clerk to put in place a codification software process with the resignation of the previous town clerk who had great technology skills, and in a sense, it's unclear where it belongs. In some ways, the state gave the money to the town clerk office, but the town clerk, obviously brand-new in that position, just has so much on her plate, is asking for, she doesn't believe that she can do it, nor should you. So I think out of the code, the infrastructure audit, maybe we can then start to place the codification, and I think, Liz, if you agree, we just kinda tread water for a little bit?
Yes. We had a very productive conference call with the people from General Code. It was myself, the town clerk, and Alan Wheelock from the Bylaw Review Committee, and once she explained the process to us, it really didn't seem like quite so large and cumbersome and everything. It seemed a lot more manageable than I think what all of us kind of initially thought it was. So as we stand now, we're gonna keep things status quo for a little bit, and then the Bylaw Review Committee over the summer is going to look through, it's a workbook that General Code puts out, and basically you go through and you have to check different items off, as far as how they relate to your bylaws. Bylaw Review Committee is going to set up a subgroup that will take that project on, but they don't wanna take full ownership of the codification process, but they're willing to do that first step. And then I would hope that by that point, by the end of the summer, we would have more of a clear idea of where that project belongs. But the woman from General Code was really phenomenal. She explained everything to do with like the payment structure, what we've paid thus far, what we're under contract for, what that article for the $2,000 that we had on the annual town meeting warrant that Tara had put in for, what that was actually paying for. So she was very knowledgeable, and I think that going forward, we just need to find sort of a permanent home for it, but I think in the short term, we're still on track.
Great.
Yep. New server upgrade. We probably should bundle that under the technology master plan, because it's really gonna come out of the infrastructure audit, what we do next. Formalized boards' goals and objectives, I think we've done that.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed, it's, take it off.
Right.
It's a success. Coordinate and manage green communities? You've done that, Liz, I believe, it should come off.
I have. That's kind of an ongoing thing, but I don't think it needs to be on the parking lot.
I agree.
It's just become sort of part of my duties.
Right.
Right. Main Street Ring Road intersection, excuse me, I saw your email.
I --
Looked pretty.
It does look pretty. I just don't know if it's possible or not, and we've sent so much money on the plan already, but I think there's just not a lot of support of that plan that was presented to us, and I don't know if there's some way for us to kind of tweak the plan so that it's more workable for what we're looking to do, which is basically, I think, slow down travel and be more safe heading to the Denit.
Yeah.
And I don't know if a mini-type roundabout is even possible with the land there.
We, my head says is, we need to have something that's gonna get through with the people, and it's clear that they're upset.
Right.
The thing that worries me right now is the road is starting to deteriorate, because we're not doing anything until we make a decision. And I think we need some sort of a, we need to, maybe start all over with an engineer, because I know we spent some money, but if nobody's gonna buy into it, then, you know, could we do a roundabout?
I don't know.
I don't know. But we need somebody who's got the expertise to come in and say, here's some other options beyond what we've seen. So I would like to see the highway take, you know, sort of a proactive, go out and find somebody and come back to us with suggestions.
So do we wanna give him direction, that we don't like the current plan, and that we'd like him to come up with something that is more conducive to what we wanna accomplish?
Unless somebody comes back and says, no, the plan you've got is the one that works, but if, yeah, I'd like to at least have some other options.
Okay.
There are some engineers that will actually help you do this type of planning work with the understanding that if you apply for a Mass Works grant to actually execute the plans, that at which point you would bring them on board as the project engineer for it. So we could poke around a little bit, too, and see if there's any interest. In a lot of neighboring towns, they do that type of thing to get Mass Works funding, and...
I think if you could help Scott?
Sure.
In sort of approaching that. The other thing we still have on our plate is the speed limits, and as you go down the road towards the townhouse, it's what they call a corduroy road, that it's, the foundation is all wood logs that are rotten. So that's on, that was Jim's idea to do the whole thing at once, the curve, ring road, and the corduroy road path, and I think we can't just let it sit.
I agree. I mean, there's, it's definitely a safety issue with that intersection and the road, and there are so many options now for even just road markings to reduce speed, you know, optical speed bars, and I saw something on the news the other day where some kids had come up with like a 3D-looking painting that was like a --
Yes.
Yeah!
I saw that.
It was amazing!
Yeah.
But it looked real!
It did!
It looked like a concrete block! So there's, you know, lots of options. It doesn't necessarily all have to be high cost to get people to slow down on their road.
And we just don't know, so we need somebody who's got the expertise.
True. So Liz, you don't think there would be any type of bidding issues if we were to do that and then put it out to bid, the project?
For the Mass Works, you would have to put the construction work out to bid, but designers are typically exempt from procurement. You can go with your person of choice, so...
Agreed.
It'd be nice just to see, even if we just had two options?
Right.
For that intersection, as to what we could do, would be, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, at least it would give you more to show the public and say, these are the options, this is why these are the only viable options, and go from there.
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
I would say Main Street's speed limits just come into that as part of it.
The whole project.
It does. I mean, that's something that I worked on for a while, and there doesn't seem to be any way around the high-speed limits. There was the survey done, I, it sounds insane to me, but the state says 85% of what people drive is the speed limit, so if people are nuts, you get 85% of nuts.
Even if they're speeding, that's what really...
It's crazy. Right, right, that is crazy.
It's pretty counterintuitive, but I did check with town council if there was any way around it, and he wasn't thinking there was, so...
So we can't, we couldn't legally put in any type of speed bumps or anything on that road?
I doubt it.
Really?
I mean, the closest you might come is, I hate roundabouts, but that, you know, their purpose is just to slow things down.
Yeah.
The trouble with roundabouts is they frequently are taking land, and that would...
Right, we need to work with what we've got.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we might be able to do something with the landowner to the, that's got a fair parcel there, just to, if it turned out that there was something that the engineer said, if you had more land, you could do X, and it made sense.
Well, they had, what I read today, about a mini-roundabout, I can't remember the amount of land you needed, but it was significantly less, but then it might restrict the type of traffic that could go down that road and navigate. It would certainly be large enough that a bus would have to go, but it may prevent large trucks. They would not be able to travel that, the roundabout, so, but lots to find out about that.
Let's see, eliminating townhouse freedom.
Please.
So I made the mistake of asking for advice.
Oh, God, who'd you ask?
Well, a former selectman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I still have to speak to him. We have a solution, we just gotta get his buy-in, or at least, you know, speak to him. So I, I'll take that on.
What about just putting some type of those orange and white traffic things, just for now, that have the little lights on the top, you know, one on each side of the driveway, so you've got three of them, just so that you can see where you should be pulling in, something temporarily? I mean, we've gotta have those kicking around down at the highway?
Liz, maybe you could ask Scott about that.
Sure.
It's not an issue so much now that daylight, you know, is here, that we've got 8 o'clock before it gets...
Yeah, and it really may not be for the summer.
Right, but come winter, we've gotta have it so...
Well, hopefully by then, we have this squared away.
Solve sound recording issues, I think we are where we're gonna be, unless, you know, it seems like this microphone we put out on the tables and asking people to come, seems to work.
Mm-hmm.
So that goes off, right?
Yes.
Volunteer recognition, the only thought I had there was that maybe we individually get out to speak to more constituencies, like CASA, Boy Scouts, Council on Aging, et cetera.
Yeah, other groups, the sports groups.
Kind of leave it on here until we get more feedback.
Yeah, we could divide this up, and, you know, I could take CASA, and someone could take the church, and the groups, and, yeah, so...
I could do the church and the Council on Aging.
All right, well, why don't I do CASA, and I'll see if I can get the, find out about the sports programs, and what's, what they've got going on.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I have her need for paves.
Great, perfect.
This was the idea, putting flags. I've been getting some pushback on that. People who don't think that's a great idea, so I'm feeling a little embellished. I mean, if it was up to me and didn't cost any money, I'd probably do it, but I don't know where you guys are on that.
What about town flags? The...
The Debra Sampson flag?
Well, I thought this, what we talked about was a mixture?
Oh.
So like a US flag, go down a couple poles, Debra Sampson, go down, US.
But people don't like it, huh?
Well, one or two, including persons who are very close to me.
Okay.
It's a funky time.
You wanna just kinda...
Leave it on the parking lot?
Yeah.
Let it simmer?
For the time being.
You know, aside from the political stuff, and what people associate or don't associate, just the sense of kind of celebration appeals to me a lot.
Yeah, me, too. You know, when I ride through towns like Kingston, that have, I don't think of it as being political, it's so much as, you know, we're celebrating being American, whichever, whatever your political philosophy is.
They do a great job in Kingston Center.
Yeah, it looks nice.
It does, it's very charred. During the fall, they had pumpkins, and all the little shops were done, and then flags, and it's a nice job.
Their flags are out now, looks good, I think.
So we don't, we don't have money for this, anyway?
No, it's like $3,000, I think we estimated, or something like that.
I do have a, something about the flagpole, so I don't know if that could be put on. A lot of people have been asking and have concerns of the flagpole on the green. I've gotten some, the flagpole on the green.
What's wrong with it?
And if there's a grint, that it's very rusted.
Okay.
And falling apart. I know it was gonna be a Boy Scout and Eagle Scout tried to do a project with it, but the cost was gonna be too much. I don't know if that was Frankie Profetio at one time that was gonna do it.
Yeah, but I think they're talking the one out here at the townhouse, you know, the little...
It's a memorial here, yeah.
Yeah, they're talking about the one on the green, too.
Okay.
Yeah, the one on the green definitely needs work, and I...
We can't even put the flag out there that often, because it ripped the last one that we purchased.
Is that qualified for CPC money?
I, you know, as the discussion was going on, and just started thinking about it, I think that's probably a stretch.
But it seems like we could somehow find some money, and the other thing is, maybe[1790.82] But it seems like we could somehow find some money. And the other thing is, maybe we go to one of the companies in town, see if we could, you know...
Get them to sponsor it?
Yeah.
You know, maybe that's a project for this year. It's kind of looking at the maintenance, the preventative maintenance that has to be done, that kind of gets delayed. And then, you know, theoretically ending up with a list, spreading it over five years or 10 years, because presumably that has to be done every 10 years. And then maybe we could go to town meeting next year with a yearly preventative maintenance article.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Can we get some quotes in the meantime, Bree, about replacing it? Just the flagpole?
Just the flagpole. Someone talked about like having it sandbasted and fixed and restored. And I don't know if places do that as well, but they take it down and...
We had an old basketball hoop from, I think it was BC. It was either BC or BU that my father-in-law brought us when they did some renovations. And it was really beat up. And we took it somewhere local and had it done, and it came out beautiful. I'll, if you think it's in good enough shape to, for us to do something like that, I'll see if we, if I can get a price.
Okay. I'll call around and ask. Just because when the memorial came up, Memorial Day and the commemoration, and the scouts had asked about it. And I said the last time someone tried to do it, and I think it was one of the cupics as well, and the cost was...
We're probably going to have time to do it now and have it back by Memorial Day.
No, but we will make sure that there is a flag hanging for the day so that it's done.
Okay.
Is the roof going to be done on the gazebo by then?
The gazebo should be done by then and cleaned up. And then I am going to go and mulch on Saturday.
You're a good person.
You are a good person.
Thank you. See, Saturday is Sunday, so don't hold me to it. Could be Sunday. And then Garden Club has, the Boy Scouts have done mulch and we'll make sure it's all ready.
And Veterans Agent will do the wreaths and all of that?
I already have the wreaths. They're in my office. We have new bows. I went around and collected the wreaths that were out. So we're going to put the new bows on them. The scouts will pick them up on Wednesday and then they'll be placed.
Great.
So we have some new ones and then we're going to spruce up the old ones.
Bridgewater intern, actually, Liz, you might want to comment on this.
Sure. So we're able to acquire the services of an intern from Bridgewater State University. And he is going to be working with our Wage and Personnel Board, free of charge. Speaking of which, I think somebody from Wage and Personnel just walked by. He's going to be working with them on doing some salary study type work, helping them get up-to-date job descriptions for some of the positions under their purview, and assisting them with maybe making some bylaw updates and that sort of thing. He's a political science major at Bridgewater State. And so there's no cost to us whatsoever for his services. He has committed to working with them at least throughout the summer. How far that extends into the fall kind of remains to be seen. I encouraged him to maybe approach the university and see about obtaining credits for the internship, then maybe we could hang on to him for a little longer, depending on how the arrangement works out. But Alan Wheelock had an opportunity to meet him and, you know, they're moving forward with him. So it should be a good arrangement.
He's more mature than your average student. I think he's like 30, 32, something like that.
Great.
You know, if he ever wanted to come in, I think we'd, I'd love to meet him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I had the chance to talk with him. And so we could take the Bridgewater intern off. What I'd like to maybe substitute is, the other two was a technology intern and a financial intern. Bridgewater didn't get any response, so I told Liz I would go after the other colleges around here, Curry, UMass. Where are the others? There's three or four or so. And we'll take the same write-up that Bridgewater did because they had a nice write-up of what we were looking for.
Okay.
See if they'll bring it back.
Great.
You know, the other one that's not so far away, which is a pretty cool place, is Wheaton College. And a pretty high-quality place as well. Might be worth checking with them.
Quincy College was the other one I was thinking of.
Okay.
So I'll leave that on, but leave, I'll change it from the intern and then put the colleges.
Okay. I just put internships for now.
Okay, great. Audit this presentation. That's been done. Go to the financial team and to us. Feels like that can come off. Lower-level townhouse water problem. I don't know. The more I talk to people, I talk to Steve Sorrow, we've got water leaking in multiple places. So it leaks at one corner of the townhouse downstairs, and it leaks at the other end of the townhouse. And there's some pumps in place in both. But they kind of keep up with the water flow when it's really a, you know, a major storm. And right now, we have, if you go downstairs, the electrical wires to different things are scotch-taped up about this high on the wall. So I don't know where we go with this because I think it's going to cost us a fair amount of money. But I think rather than just abandoning the downstairs, we at least have to know what it would take to do something. So I did, we need somebody to talk to. I did talk to the seniors today, and one lady gave me the name of a person, A1 Foundation, that does that kind of work. And I was going to pack it, pass it on to Tom Millius and ask him if he would kind of lead on this because he's got probably more expertise than any of us. If that makes sense, I would add that on. And just, we'll check back later and see where we are.
Sounds good.
Which leads you to the next one, the old police station renovation. Guess that would be bundled together. I did talk to the Council on Aging and told them that our current plan now is to take down the non-bearing load walls. And it might be that the prisoners will do that. And then we put in $20,000 for the article and take everybody who's downstairs upstairs for the time being. Because there's a mold issue down there and we just got to go along the way we've been going. So that's sort of where that is. So I would like to add that on to our parking lot and just keep it, you know, as we go forward.
So is it going to be set up with offices up there still?
My thought was just tear everything down, make a big open space. Then we have $20,000 and decide what we want to do. But I would say whatever we do, be temporary, even if it's cubicles. Just until we know better what we want to do.
Would there be any group that's coming up from downstairs that would need privacy? It really isn't. Everything is pretty open, right?
Yeah. We might want to put one conference room that's just forever whoever wants to use it. Just so it's available if there is something like, I assume zoning might have some issues at times. Well, actually, any of them.
Yeah, maybe even Pat's office.
Yeah.
I did, when I spoke to Chief last week, Liz and I were up there for a little bit. He's leaving the projector that's up. It's kind of...
In their training room.
Okay.
That would be kind of a logical place for a conference room.
Okay.
Large enough and it's already wired.
Perfect.
He said he was leaving it all there. The screen pulls down. There's two white boards, John's whiteboard, that you can write on. So it's two.
Thank you.
So, news.
Maybe we can have a turn.
Yeah.
They have a server room up there now. It's like a secure, small, kind of closet-like space. We went up there with our IT person and he has hopes that he can take all the equipment that's on the floor right now in Wendy's office and put it all in there. So...
Makes perfect sense.
Kind of get it out of the way and out of her space. And it would be secure. And it's already built for that. It's a tiny little, kind of like a closet.
Okay.
So who wants to lead?
So is that the plan? Is that we're going to move all the offices from downstairs upstairs?
That's what I've been saying. If you're okay with that. I mean, we really haven't formally...
No, we haven't really had any. That was certainly one of the options in the, on the surveys that we did.
And in my mind, it was just to give us a year. So it wasn't like that was definitive. But for the short term, over the next fiscal year, we at least have the people upstairs and then we could, if we could fix the water problem downstairs, that would open up a lot of options. But if it's going to be multi-hundred thousands, then, you know, maybe you can't do that. Just live with it. I don't know.
What do you think, Mark?
I haven't put that much thought into it. And I, I mean, I think moving them upstairs is good. I just want to be a little careful that once we do that, if we wanted to change along the way, it's going to be really hard to change. I'd like to put some thought into this and maybe talk about it in two weeks.
Okay. All right. So we'll hold this one?
Actually, I'd like to just walk around up there, actually.
Yeah, I would like to do that too and just kind of...
Why don't we get Tom Millius to give us a tour?
Maybe we do that next meeting?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay. Kind of visualize what we're talking about. Okay. Perfect.
Do you want this on the agenda by itself then on...
Maybe a townhouse, old police station, townhouse tour?
Tour, yep.
Yeah, I would put that last on the agenda and then they can go from there and then go to adjourn.
Okay.
Six three, yeah.
Townhouse tour. Townhouse parking, this is one of my pet peeves. So we've got to figure out the parking here. And we need an engineer to help us.
Can we get a grant for something like that?
Possibly. I think it's going to be a lot easier though now that the police are back there.
It seemed better tonight, just not having all their vehicles out there.
Gone are the days of confusion where you're trying to pull in and there's a cruiser coming out at you. I think the simplest thing to do would be maybe to have it be like the little narrow opening that's closest to the building, have that be enter only, and then the other way is exit. Obviously, fire apparatus is going to have to do what they need to in terms of turn radius. But for everybody else, maybe you exit.
But it's just a loop?
Yeah.
I mean, there are some things that are going to change. When the trailer goes, theoretically, if I thought a year from now, some seasonal equipment, trucks, being in a different building, which is going to help. And I mean, it seems like ultimately this, maybe there's some short-term things, but the master plan is when that's really going to get straightened out. I mean, the whole thing needs to get bulldozed all the way over to the library and, I think.
Reconfigured, yeah.
But I don't know why we couldn't do the engineering. At least get a thought process of how we're going to proceed.
Yeah. No, I agree. It should just keep getting better as, as we get rid of some of the stuff around there.
Right now, you know, if we have something on the ball field, we've got a sign out here that says only authorized vehicles can go around the back of the townhouse. So that means that anybody who's doing baseball has to come in through the new police entrance.
Ooh.
Yeah. And the entrance, as I understand it, you can't get to the baseball field except right at the end here where it, the tape is down. So if you come up here thinking you can go in the old way, well, they bulldozed it, so it's got a pretty good cut to it.
Oh, wow.
That's why I'm saying we, I think we need somebody to come in and just say, look, this is what you should do, and here's some options. And at least move a little forward in terms of, rather than just leaving it the way it is.
For the short term though, now that construction is done, we can take away that sign that says do not enter the authorized personnel so that people don't feel like they can't. I'll tell Scott to take it down tomorrow.
Good.
He had to put up the handicap sign that they had taken down during construction and a few other things. So he can take care of that.
Just as an aside, I had, somebody asked me if we could add two handicap spaces now that the police vehicles are out there next to. I don't see why not. We've got the space there.
We added one back that's in front of the clerk's office that we lost during construction. And I had actually suggested that same thing to Scott. I said the one next to the existing space, make that one a handicap space too. But I don't think he had the paint he needed because he was supposed to go over some of the lines and everything. So I'll put that on his list.
Great. Thanks.
I'll reach out to Paze and find out what's actually happening here for games.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's playing in this field anymore. So I'll try to kind of get an idea of how much use there's going to be.
That'd be great. Last year, there was nobody.
Yes.
But I believe, and I'm not sure which, so they have the two fields.
Right.
One field, I think, is being used, but the other one isn't. It's going through Halifax like last year.
Right.
But I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. I think it's the younger age group that's playing here, not the older ones. But let me find out what their schedule is.
Great. So what are we going to do beyond that? How are we leaving this?
How about if I, I'll have this for our next meeting on six three, and why don't we hold it for that meeting? So at least then we'll have an idea of how much use it's going to get, about whether or not this is something we have to address right away or not.
Great.
Because if nobody's using it, we can probably buy some time.
Great. Middleborough, Plimpton, Soul Street land utilization. This is something that Liz has been championing along. I think we're moving along.
We are. We seem like we're at a good place right now. Wendy and I had a successful meeting with some of the officials from Middleborough. And right now, there is an option on the table for us to enter into an agreement with them, basically for some of their land that's in question, and try to come up with something that's mutually beneficial. Create a parking area, trailhead, kiosk-type setup for access to Two Brookes Preserve, and also so that the Soul Homestead could utilize that, that land as well. But as far as the tax issue, we were thinking if we entered into like a lease or a license agreement with them and basically have the cost of that equate to what they owe in taxes so that it's a wash, basically. The last I checked in with them, we sent them some bullet points on kind of what we thought a viable option might look like, in draft format, obviously. They were going to speak with their legal counsel and figure out kind of which of those parameters makes sense, if any, and what is the legal and proper way to do it. I'm assuming if we call it a lease agreement, that it would need to go before town meeting. So there was some discussion about what do we want to call it, how would it work. But it seemed to make them happy, and it seemed to be an option that we could live with and would benefit from as well. But it's still very much in draft format and things could change, obviously, with a moment's notice. So I think it's good to keep that on here and we'll stick to it.
I think if we can accomplish that, it's going to be a real win-win for everybody.
Absolutely. And having it go to town meeting, just to solidify the support or, you know, whatever the town wants to do with that, I think would be key too. It's, it's a big deal.
Really just the key that we are trying really hard to accommodate Middleborough. And I hope they, I hope they get that.
Well, I think between Wendy and Liz, they've come up with a brilliant idea.
Absolutely. You guys have made huge strides already.
I can't take too much of the credit for that, though. I more or less told Wendy kind of what we were looking for, but she was, she put in more of the brain power in that option.
Good teamwork.
Rah rah for the assesses.
Good teamwork.
North Plimpton Cemetery cleanup. This is, as you know, I'm kind of crazy about genealogy. We've started a genealogy club at the library. We have three cemeteries in town. We have the old cemetery across the street. We have the one behind the church. And the other cemetery is on the Plimpton-Kingston line. And if you go down there, it's, it was cleaned up by the Boy Scouts, maybe eight or 10 years ago, as part of an Eagle project. But it's all getting overgrown again. So I reached out to a person who was acquainted with the Boy Scouts, and I haven't heard back. But I'd like to see us get it cleaned up and then turn it over to the highway because it's one of our three cemeteries. First, we got to get, I don't think Scott wants to take it on as a project, given all the other things we're putting in his basket. But I think it just makes perfect sense to have it looking good. The fourth cemetery that, I don't know where it is. I know, well, I know roughly where it is. There's a smallpox cemetery. It's on Santa Street. I think it's where Bonnie Pond is. But I don't know if it's under Bonnie Pond or if it's across Bonnie Pond. And there's no headstones. They were all buried, it was back when they had the smallpox here. Soul, Middleborough on Soul Street has a, just a sign, Smallpox Cemetery, saying, you know, on this site. I'd like to get something like that too, but I don't know where it is. So I'm working to, maybe some old time. to, maybe some old time will get it.
To identify the location?
There's a cemetery?
Well, it's a cemetery in that there's people buried there, but there's no headstones. There's also a raid that they found out on the Billings Farm, on the one, Halifax-Plimpton line, when they were doing some clerics.
Really?
Yeah. So there's different things around town that are kind of interesting. This financial technology internet, I thought I would put it here. This is the same thing that we were talking about, so.
Okay.
And then we had our usual, I don't know if anything should go on or come off here.
I had a couple of-
Sure, no, go ahead, Mark.
I, I, I'm not sure these, these even belong on the parking lot. I, I, but just a reminder that the Solar Bylaw Working Group was in on a solar, um, uh, bylaw review, and we have a wa, water resources, um, working group, working on that. Um, the, the one I wanted to bring up, and again, I'm not absolutely sure if those are on the parking lot, but just a reminder, something that comes up every year at Mass Municipal Associating Meetings is about, um, um, planning for the financial year and the beginning of the budget process, and lots of towns in November will have kind of a financial summit in November, Board of Selectmen, FinCon, Wage and Personnel, the Financial Officer, everyone getting together and just kind of plotting out the timeline up to town meeting, and really just starting to target expectations and all that. And I think that's something we haven't done, and it'd be a good way to coordinate. Uh, Liz has done a great job in, um, coordinating with FinCon for really the first full year with her involved, but I think that additional piece, and maybe even one, one or two more meetings along the way, so that we're all on the same page and we don't suddenly receive the budget, totally unaware of how we got there, so.
I'd love to see both come on to the, this thing to watch, because they're important.
They're very important. Okay.
Okay.
All right. All I had was possibly septic.
Septic?
Yes.
Septic.
Yeah, we will need to, um, look into that.
Okay.
One of the, um, as an aside, talking to an individual who's active in town, whom he's saying that senior citizen housing on the campus would be, make perfect sense. His response was, "You will need a lot more land for the septic. That's going to be the issue." He said the building you can figure out, but the septic is, so I agree, we need to try and think this through.
Yeah, start thinking of, right, the campus, um, okay. All right, so we'll put that one on there, too. Did you have any reports on things to follow for long-term?
Uh, I didn't have anything.
All right, I had something on the Carver Urban Renewal Project. I reached out to Charlie from OCPC to, um, just kind of champion our, uh, our position that we need to protect the quality of, um, life of our, our residents that work over there, and he said that they would definitely help, uh, fight for us on that. On the Rocky Harvest Settlement compliance, I haven't heard anything, but I don't know if, if no news is necessarily good news, and I don't know if it would make sense to maybe, um, talk to our zoning enforcement officer and just have him occasionally swing by and see what time things there, they're showing up, the first truck to, to pump. I, I mean, is that, is, would he be the appropriate one to do that?
Well, he's not here but one day a week, right?
Yeah, he has, I mean, fairly limited hours, but I'm sure he could.
What day does he work?
Usually, he's here on Monday evenings, so he comes in, like, earlier than what we're working.
Okay, all right, so that might not work to have him do it.
With the site business and everything, but we could make something work.
But it, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea for that to be on his radar swing, because it's not going away. It does need continued, um, observation, so, yeah.
I can let him know about it, and, um, you know, we can put it on his radar, and maybe every now and then, he can make that be part of his hours.
Right.
Yep.
Right, that he's just here early that day, and?
Yeah.
It wouldn't have to be every Monday, it could be-
No, just every Monday, just go by.
Yeah, just to swing by and see what time that first truck is showing up.
Sure.
Okay, that would be great.
Good.
Um, let's see. Oh, Denet Water Treatment Project Updates. I don't know if we want to reach out to John Wilhamsen on that, to find out what's going on.
Yeah, it may be all, it may be all done, so that, it'd be good to know whether we can take it off and on.
All right, well, I can reach out to him and report back, um, at our next meeting. All right, and I think that's, yep, that's all that I had, too.
I can sign that to you, yes.
Wendy and Good Project, though.
Yeah, we certainly are.
When you do this?
The other one that's on here is the Future Explo, Exploration of Shared Services. Um, and I, I did read in the Halifax-Plimpton, uh, paper last week that the, so, one of the selectmen candidates in Halifax is, actually has been interested in shared services, and, uh, and I, as I understand, if he won election, that, that may be something to continue to pursue.
Absolutely, good point. Okay, so parking lot update, check, um, board's goals for coming year, long-range master plan for town campus, we touched on that today, so we're waiting for Lori, or not Lori, Lisa, to provide us with either a final draft of that document. Um, grant acquisition.
We're going to need another survey unless we get that pretty soon.
I know, no kidding, with the new changes.
Yeah.
Um, when does, town meeting funded the grant writer, correct?
July first.
July first.
Okay, so she starts July first.
And so we need to probably talk to her again.
Yeah, and just kind of get a feel for the expectations. There are a few loopholes.
We're still on the same page, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, continue professionalization of town government and, uh, general, town general in financial operations, so we're continuing to work on that. Um, is there anything new to report on that?
I think we've pretty well covered it in the conversation.
All right. Um, volunteer outreach, strengthen town committees, boards, and commissions. We talked about that, too, about kind of dividing and, and, uh, getting the message out about the openings. Support town administrators' goals. We continue to work towards, uh, supporting Liz's goals. Continue protecting towns' natural resources and unique character. We've talked about that, too, with, um, the water resources and, uh, some of the other items that we've got on our radar. Encourage fiscally sound governance. Um, I think we do that all the time.
And probably it's trying to get an intern in to help them.
Right.
Did, did we skip over affordable housing?
Oh, we did. Explore affordable housing opportunities and use of town-owned land and buildings. Do you have anything to report on that?
Uh, just that I am talking about it with different people.
Okay.
Talked about it with the Council on Aging. Um, can, would it make sense for me to run down the meeting?
Sure.
I don't know if I gave you a copy of that, Liz?
I don't.
Okay. Do it, can, yes. I talked about the van, the fact that we voted against it. Uh, told them that we weren't against having, um, a service that incorporates wheelchair or farm, but we felt uncomfortable going forward with a, uh, lease arrangement until we knew how it was going to play out.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things they're buying, or they have made a, a deal to buy My Senior Center software. It's inexpensive, I think it was fourteen hundred dollars. Every town uses it that touches on us. In fact, it's used by almost every town in eastern Massachusetts. I don't know about western. And it would start to capture some of the, uh, things that you mentioned. I also talked to, uh, Jim, who does the, uh, van driving, to clarify a few things. He said he only does doctor runs. He does not do groceries or anything like that, but he, uh, there is a volunteer, Jackie Frey, Freydis, who does do that.
Okay.
She works with her own cop. She doesn't use it anymore.
Okay.
So the van is being used for medical issues.
Okay.
Um, and I told, he had to leave, he could not attend the meeting, but we're going to sit down again, but I felt more comfortable, I think.
Yeah, we should probably get this on, um, the parking lot or somewhere where we're, um, talking about, um, senior issues or-
Yes.
Something-
There was a good crowd. There was at least fifteen, maybe twenty people in there.
Okay.
So, we're interested, you know, about senior.
Yeah, I don't know what the best way to, um, their senior needs, something where we're talking about this on a regular basis.
I told them I would come back every two months, roughly, to just talk. Joy Mabel suggested a separate meeting from the Council on Aging, so that it's just devoted to that.
Well, do you want to just call it for now, Plimpton Seniors Needs?
Yeah.
And we'll put it on the parking lot? Okay.
I'm not sure I had it.
Awesome, thank you.
I talked about the old police station space, that we were going to take everybody down and move them up, and that we were just going to knock down walls, and we weren't going to make it a finished product. We needed a year.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about the master plan for the townhouse campus. Talked about senior citizen housing, affordable housing. Talked about the grant writer, that we were going to try it for a quarter and see. Old Town House, um, I had written a memo to Kathy Lanatra, asking her to put in for a lift, and that was ninety-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand for a lift, forty-five thousand for construction. She said that she couldn't get it into her legislative thing, um, but that she had talked to Senator Bradley, and he was picking it up, so I have to go talk to him.
Okay.
But the senior citizens seem to be very much in support of that. Handicap access, just talked about the article that we got approved to put in the buttons and fix the door. Uh, just mentioned Zumba and yoga, that it was the, uh, focal point of the Board of Selectmen, that the Old Town House was a community center and we needed to have as many events going on there. That Plimpton Historical Society would be the main tenant, but that we wanted to see other things, and if we did get a lift, that potentially all the events for, uh, Council on Aging would happen there at the Old Town House, but the office would still be here. They're utilizing that for doing.
Were they interested in moving back to the Historical Society Building?
From the office side?
No.
From the event side?
No, from the Zumba and from the exercise side.
Right. Uh, Joy mentioned that, um, she was looking at a couple of things, like, uh, what is it, Tai Chi, or?
Yeah.
Is that right? That, that maybe potentially finding somebody to do that. The yoga has moved up to the church and has no interest in going back.
Okay.
So, but we still have Zumba, though there's some issues there. Hopefully, we'll move through.
Okay.
Uh, a couple of things that they came up with, different people. One is the entrance to the firehouse needs a handrail. Uh, one of the ladies says she has a balance prob, problem, and when she's gone over there a couple of times, she has to put her hand on the wall and kind of move along, so I'll mention that to the chief. The Old Town House has a water issue. I'm not sure I was aware whether it's too much iron in the water or what, but apparently when they have an event for coffee and things like that, they bring in water, so can at least find out. A dishwasher was suggested. I thought maybe we could reach out to Cisco when, uh, the tax issues are all settled, because, uh, I went out there and introduced Kathy Lanata to check for Asia.
Mm-hmm.
He was very positive on the, uh, relationship with the town, so that's good.
That's really good.
So we just need to get that other thing settled. Uh, there's a problem with the air conditioner at the Old Town House. They took it out when they were painting, and on a day like this, when they're doing Zumba, so I don't know whether they can use the one that's there, or whether they need to do one. I could just give John Wilhamsen a call. And that's about it.
Okay.
Okay, I have something for you after, though, Bree.
All right.
Thank you.
So what do you have, Liz?
Um, so for correspondence, um-
He would like to be part of it.
We have the scope of services layout from Lynch and Marini, which is to be signed by our chairperson. Um, this aligns with the contract that we had signed for them for fiscal nineteen to complete their audit. Um, this just summarizes their scope of services for the fiscal nineteen audit, which will-
Is the same as-
Begin, yeah, it's the same as what they've done in the past.
Okay. And Barbara's okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, also, in correspondence, we have a letter here from the fire chief. Um, he is pleased to inform us that the Plimpton Fire Department has now added a chaplain to their ranks. Um, so they have Reverend Gary Bloom. Um, he was one of the original, um, Department of Fire Services chaplains, um, and he was deployed as a chaplain to the World Trade Center, um, to Boston during the bombing event, and various other things. Um, he has advanced degrees in psychology and theology, and he's experienced in particular with firefighter PTSD and critical incident stress. Um, so he's now part of the team, and they're really making a lot of headway there as far as kind of handling things and, and doing all that. So, he was just letting us know that that person, um, is now in the mix if they need him.
Terrific.
Um, and otherwise, my update was mainly centered around the IT audit and everything, obviously, um, you know, finished up breaking everything down from town meeting, um, so I guess we move forward.
Great.
Can I, just bouncing back to, um, COA and seniors, um, it, it, just in a, in a general way, and maybe the parking lot, that's one that keeps coming up, and it seems like shared services is a real consideration, um, and I actually really wonder about that with the van in particular, wheelchair access van, um, um.
Do you want us to look at now if there's any shared services grant money available?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
Beautiful.
All right, for grant for, um-
The van and, I think, all other services, maybe in a big way. I wonder if two small towns, particularly Halifax and Plimpton, together, I, it, it's a natural mix. Um, we tried shared services with fire, we hit all kinds of challenges. We have been incredibly successful with the cable studio and shared services working well, and I, it seems like COA and is a, is a, and Elder Services is a fruitful place to keep an eye on them.
I think we have to bring Joy Mabel Moore in under our wing, so that whatever grants we're looking for are, um, you know, we all know what's going on. We've got too many stove pipes right now.
I'd, I'd love, I mean, I think it's been a big problem even with those decisions. I'd love for her to come in every couple of months, just so we're, we, we aren't at all coordinated at this point.
She did say that they looked at Gatra.
Yes.
And neither Halifax or Plimpton is big enough.
But are we together?
I don't think so, but she, so we can look at that, ask. Apparently, Gatra won't even talk to small communities.
Well, that stinks.
Kingston, they will do.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, maybe if we're partnered as one unit. Um, all right, so why don't, I won't apply for anything. I'll just see if it's out there, and then maybe if there is grant money available, it might be smart to get together with Joy and the COA Director of Halifax and some of the Halifax Selectmen and talk about if this is something we want to pursue, because we'll have to do it jointly.
Yeah, I mean, and really, it's everything. The van, even meeting place, I mean, the big level, the housing level.
Services, right, right, the communities, yep.
Something at the town line.
Right.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of possibility there.
Yeah, sure is. They don't have town water, do they, in Halifax?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's the only town that doesn't.
Okay. All righty. All right, so I'll see if anything's out there, and then we'll-
Cool, thank you.
Go from there. So why don't we put that on, um, the agenda, so I don't forget to report on it? Okay, so we're put on availability.
I did say we were assuming that we'll call any transportation.
Perfect. Yeah, and, um, they said they are more than willing to help us in any way they can to help us work through, um, the challenges. help us work through the challenges.
We need to solve this here because it is a--
Oh, we need to be ready to have a warrant article for Town Meeting to address this, absolutely. All right, so correspondence.
Oh, I did that.
Perfect. Okay, oh, it was short and sweet.
Yes.
All right. Dates to Remember.
Oh, I forgot to mention the newspaper.
Okay.
There was good stuff.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
So there was a Town Meeting recap, but the highlight, at least from my perspective, was there was a really nice article about the police station open house and a great picture of a five-year-old resident, who I believe his father is a police officer here in town. And he was dressed in his full police uniform, so he was really cute.
He was so adorable.
He was there on Saturday. And it was just a really nice event all around.
Perfect feedback. All right, so let's see. Next meeting will be 6:30 and then 6:17 for June. We'll have the Memorial Day Parade, 5:27 on Monday, so the townhouse will be closed. So we need to, at some point, kind of get our marching orders from Bree as to who's doing what. I mean, we could keep it what we did last year. I think you--
I will. I have it ready to go. I need to insert names for you. I don't have the names from the--
Okay. Yeah, let's do it the way we did it last year.
So I just need to take them and put your names in.
Yeah.
Put who you're going to introduce.
Perfect.
And the name of the -- who's reading Flanders Fields, who's doing the--
So do we still have to do the judging of the SCs or somebody else?
You know what? One time I did it and I gave everybody one, and then they passed them all in with their name. They didn't know who it was. And we did them like that one year, and I can do that.
Yeah, why don't you do that, where the people in the townhouse can choose the winner? Are you guys okay with that? Okay. Yeah, because you don't have a lot of time.
No, I said I've been sending it out and I still--
Right, get it done in one day here. Okay.
I know who's going to sing.
Okay.
But it's a group of them, like they did last year, Mrs. Cardinal has. But Peter last week said that he was, "Oh, don't worry." And I'm like, "Okay, I'm worried."
Back to the open meeting, we'll have a contract discussion that's going to need an executive session.
Okay, so 5:30? Do you want to start on 6:30?
Yeah.
And then that's the night that we'll finish upstairs with hopefully Tom Melius can give us a tour or somebody can give us a tour of the old police station.
Do you want to do it after the meeting or do you want to do it before?
At the end of the meeting.
At the end.
Makes sense to do it at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. Just have Tom stick around then?
Right.
Executive session at 5:30 for 6:30?
The executive session at 5:30.
Yes, purpose, too.
Thank you.
All right, and then the Memorial Day Parade will start at 9:30 at the Old Town House, or we'll gather at 9:30 and then we'll step off at 10:00. Okay.
Are we color coordinating this year?
You know, we never talk about it and it always just seems to work out.
The public doesn't love it.
You almost wear white.
One year, we each showed up. I was white.
Yes, you were being culli.
I think that was red and blue. Red, white, and blue, the three of us marching down.
I'm ready for it. I'll be blue.
Okay, perfect. All right.
We do have it, so we have the cow train, the bee train, we've got two antique--
Those are so cute.
Vehicles, we've got two antique fire trucks.
Are we going to have Mrs. Silva? Will she be the Boston Post Can?
She's going to be there. Post Can recipient will be there.
Terrific.
The Garden Club would like to thank them and the Boy Scouts. So hopefully, we just -- no?
Going to pull it all off. Okay. All right, so we still have got some minutes that we need to get squared away. The 3:11, 3:25, 4:08, 4:25, and 5:15, right? Yeah, 5:15. Okay. So did you have anything? I read those a while back.
I was fine on 3:11.
Okay, how about you, John?
Yes, I forgot to bring -- I have a separate folder, but my place is in my brain, so.
Okay, so make a motion that we accept the minutes of 3:11 as written. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 3:25.
3:25 had a typo, but I don't think it's a problem, so.
Okay. All right, so make a motion that we accept the minutes from 3:25 as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4:08.
Who seconded the first set?
John. John is, I think--
I'm going to be the second.
He's seconded both of them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, 4:08.
I'm good.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 4:08 as submitted?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 4:22.
I'm good.
All right, I think that one of these, I wasn't there. No, I was there.
4:22.
That was the May 7th that you weren't there?
May 6th.
May 6th.
May 6th, okay. Draft updated 5 -- okay, so 4:22. Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of 4:22 as written?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we've got 5:15.
What happened to 5:06?
I'll make the motion on 5:06 because I didn't -- I don't remember seeing any.
I saw them. They looked good, but I wasn't there.
Okay.
Okay. You wrote those minutes, I believe, Mark.
5:06?
Yeah.
I remember seeing some.
Just vote again, please. You know, I think we approved those at the last meeting, didn't we?
Did you?
No, this is the next meeting.
We didn't do any--
5:06 and now it's 5:20.
So the 5:22, let's see.
That's 4:22.
5:06 was me.
Was it you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, do you want to hold it?
Yeah, 5:06, you have to hold it.
All right. So let's hold the 5:06. So 5:15, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 5:15 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're up with all of our minutes. So we just have to hold 5:06, Bree, and then we're current. Okay, rant's a rave, so let's go first.
Thank you.
I'm glad to go first. So my rant is sort of almost directed at myself. It's always interesting at Town Meeting. There are times to do some conversing, there are some times to keep one's mouth shut. That was a Town Meeting that was going smoothly and no reason to do too much. In retrospect, I wish I had spoken up as you did to remind people that the reason the Board of Selectmen weren't in favor of the van was not that we're not in favor of bringing it to the COA, we're just that we think that needs some more planning and some more work along the way and that I think we are actually fervently in favor of that. So my rant is that in retrospect, I wish I had just spoken up a little bit more. That happens sometimes. My rave goes for Board of Selectmen Chairs. My rave for John for the last year and all that he's done and previous years for Christine. And I'm actually really looking forward to serving with her as a chair again. I tend to learn so much from the chairs that I serve with. And I learned a lot from John and I have in the past learned from Christine and I know I will again, so.
Well, it's--
Thank you both.
We -- I think we all learn from each other. It's just, I think we've got a really good board and that will be my rave and not just -- I think town government. We're at a good place with town government right now with the leadership that we have on the different boards and committees. It seems to be there's some cohesiveness where we're working towards mutual goals and it really makes such a difference when, you know, we can find what we're more, you know, that what we have in common than what we disagree on and really work together and make things happen in the best interest of the town. So that would be my rave, is that we've got some really good people in leadership positions that are, you know, stretching their muscles on the bylaw review and really making their presence felt and a good -- in a good way in the town.
My rave would kind of take off on that. I think Town Meeting, again, just showed how people are willing to say, "Okay, these people have been working hard. They seem to know what they're doing and we're going to go along with it." And I talked to different people after and that seemed to be the attitude that they were taking. Sometimes I wish there was more discussion. We're losing some of the characters in town. It used to be the characters would stand up and question everything.
Every time, every time.
So it's kind of a yin and a yang type thing, but I feel good, too, about what we're doing. I think we're proceeding the right way.
Awesome. All right, very good. So we've got the parade on Monday.
Yep.
And that's rain or shine?
Unless it gets called off by fire and police, which would be--
Okay, all right. So hopefully, and I don't know if that has ever happened? And then we'll do Flag Day.
We'll do Flag Day ceremony.
We did do that one time.
We did, because the weather was bad. All right, so we'll see you at the parade and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.